Everybody's paying attention. I'd like to hear what you want to say. Go right ahead. It's in closed captioning too, so we'll see if it gets it right or not. Yeah, very easily, actually. I could pause it, I could freeze, I could blow it up. And guess who's on camera? I can see you, I can see you, I can see you.
All right, good evening, everyone. Anyone that is listening into us as we live stream this, listening through the microphone on your on your phone does not work as well as if you were to listen through it through a computer or a Bluetooth speaker that's hooked up to your phone will help with the hearing of the of the meeting. So we're going to call the order and stand forward with the.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Abel, here.
England.
Here.
Falesco.
Here.
Bloom.
Here.
King. Fleming.
Here.
Hired.
Here.
All right, we are to the public input portion of the meeting. Seeing none, we will move forward with the citizen agenda. Seeing none, we are going to move forward with the personnel report. I have a proposed motion by the Board of Education to approve the following personnel report. All new district personnel, including substitutes, are subject to successful completion of all state and local employment requirements. Approve Scott Zowrist as a volunteer coach with the high school football program beginning with the 2020-2021 school term. I have a motion, please.
Summon me.
In a second.
Stand.
You guys got it? Can you make sure about the first time? Okay. All right, real call, please. Abel, aye. England.
Aye.
Falesco.
Aye.
Bloom.
Aye.
King. Fleming.
Aye.
Hired.
Aye.
We are on to the new business portion of the meeting. I have a proposed motion by the Board of Education to approve a resolution for the Litchfield Community Unit School District number twelve to participate in the Illinois School District Rapid Asset Fund. I have a motion, please.
Summon me.
In a second.
Stand.
That's the person you'd like to answer?
Yes, as we then begin to sell the alternative government bonds, working cash bonds, health life safety bonds, that's a that is a large bond sale and we need somebody to handle that once the proceeds are received to the district. Local banks, Mr. Fleming, would you share a little bit of why we need to look outside of the local banks?
Sure. Basically, from my experience on an issue that large kind of is a issue with local banks to deal with, especially in these times. There's certain requirements on the bank for what I'm thinking, that kind of thing. The dollars we're talking about here is pretty large percentage of their total assets. So we're required to have some safe investments and this looks like one that from my study that we can have it invested and save. It looks like the returns are extremely low, but that's part of the market.
Yeah, that's the market.
Liquid and safe.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming, but that anytime you have a large sale of this nature, it's easier to have them coordinate all of the transactions. Money will flow to them and to us as needed. So that's why we're doing this resolution. That allows us to participate. And then, once we have that, I'll file the resolution with them tomorrow and then the authorized signatures on that will be myself and Donovan. And then we'll work on setting up the.
Real call, please. Abel, aye. England.
Aye.
Falesco.
Aye.
Bloom.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Hired.
Aye.
I have a proposed motion by the Board of Education to approve the Health Life Safety Amendments for Slidler, Madison Park, Colt and Russell Elementary Schools in the Litchfield School District. I have a motion, please.
Summon me.
In a second.
Yes, one of the tasks that we had was cleaning up the Health Life Safety Amendments in Iowa. Multiple amendments from many years back that needed to be cleaned up and everything needed to be revisited. And FGM went through and visited our buildings again to make sure we had an updated Health Life Safety Report because you knew that the previous Health Life Safety Reports were done several years ago. So they went through and updated the reports based on today's knowledge and that situation and we cleaned them up. And the board is required to approve the Health Life Safety Amendments so that I can file those first with the ROE and then with the State of Illinois. And then, once we get approval on that, then that gives us the authority to issue the Health Life Safety Bonds. So when we did the updated report, we had that Slidler building with the updated Health Life Safety needs was $4,908,157. JD Colt, $4,077,639. Madison Park, $4,354,878. And Russell Elementary at $3,491,287. So that brings our total of Health Life Safety needs for the four elementary buildings at $16,831,962. Those will be the amendments that we file with the state showing up-to-date Health Life Safety Reports and that situation, which gives us the framework to work on Health Life Safety Bonds to refurbish your building and do what we need to do. So that's that's where we are, but that's all been cleaned up. Kevin, you want to allude anything to that?
If there was any questions on the whole process, like Greg had mentioned, every school district just requires to do a survey of what the needs are for each school district. The previous architect had amendments in there that were just sitting there, so we went through, reviewed their items that they had, reviewed the costs that they had, and added any additional items that we had to follow in one single document instead of having a couple different amendments out there. It's two or three for each school.
Yeah. Okay. All right, real call, please. Abel, aye. England.
Aye.
Falesco.
Aye.
Bloom.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Hired.
Aye.
We are on to the informational portion of the meeting and the first item is the presentation by FGM and.
Greg, do you need to say anything before I begin?
Yeah, I will, I'll interrupt, Kevin. You know, even though it's been a little while since we've come back to this, we have been working as the administration in FGM and Petler in terms of reviewing facilities, reviewing options, most definitely in terms of what we can proceed and what we can afford. I think everything we've been doing has been based on the numbers that Mr. King presented so that we will be able to operate within the budget in terms of the bonds that we have available to complete the project. One of the things that we did, and we'll get back to this, is that put in my notes, as we've looked at this this setting and property available to us and facilities, we definitely have been kicked around several different options in two facilities or two site footprints away from the junior high. I think originally we had talked about looking at that footprint up there, but that was pretty crowded when we took a look at that. Then we had to take a look at whatever else we had available to us. And after spending some time working through this process in terms of the facilities, and the other thing is the site itself, depending upon the amount of property that we could utilize to make our facilities updated with renovating an existing facility and putting classrooms onto an existing facility still gives us plenty of room for access with transportation and playground area for students. And the other one was looking at new construction, which we will discuss that as well on the on the property down the street in terms of how that's going to lay out in conjunction to new construction. So after several meetings and discussions and touring our facilities, the first, there were two facilities that were ruled out right from the get-go, that being Madison Park. Madison Park is seen its outlived its days and it needs to be replaced. It's just the fact that it's an older building and it really needs to be replaced. The other one is this building. It's very difficult to have preschool and you have your bathrooms in the basement. It's really, you know, it serves its purpose, but it's time to look for a new home for our preschool program as well. And that was a lot of our conversation, that as we take these two facilities offline first, then where do we put our preschool, kindergarten and first grade? Well, the ideal situation is that we form an early childhood center, a true early childhood center, which is preschool through first grade. That way, we have all of our early learners together, we have our early learner educators together, we are able to meet their needs together so that they would essentially go to an early learning center for three years, preschool, kindergarten and first grade, so they would have that connection and that working together in terms of that setting. And that would be a fine attribute to our educational system that we're able to meet those children's needs in a early childhood center. The discussion then turned to focus on Colt or Russell. And really what it boiled down to is the actual space. Both buildings definitely have some major needs to it, particularly with the gymnasium at Russell. And the actual size of the Russell lot, that's a very small lot, as many of you are aware. So we then turned our focus to looking at Colt Elementary because of the location of Colt Elementary and the ability to renovate Colt Elementary and it would still have our amenities that we need for our kindergarten and first grade and then being able to address our preschool situation. So and the biggest thing we were looking for is we have the transportation, we have existing parking that will not need to expand parking there and we can have a drop-off area, but it's playground area. When we looked at the Russell site, we really did not have a true green space for both programs to be able to provide outdoor activities to them, for them. And so I'm going to turn this over to Kevin and then he's going to talk about the Colt site in terms of that. One of the things that we did look at too is if you look at the relationship, the elementary facilities, the early learning child, the early learning center and the two through five center would be on this side of town. So you would have your elementary facilities on the south side of town, then you would have your six through twelve on the north side of town. The thing that I do want to stress with both of these facilities, and Kevin will talk about this, these two facilities will have storm shelters for tornado proof. So our early learners will have a storm shelter, as well as our two through five learners will have a storm shelter. The new construction requires it, but we're going to put that in to this facility for our early for our early learners and with that situation. So Kevin, I'll turn it over to you and you may have some insight as to why we're at this one too.
So thank you, Greg. Thank you for having me again. If at any point you have the trouble understanding me, I could drop my math down, so feel free to interrupt with any questions. But Greg did a great job summarizing kind of how we got to where we're at now. So what we're looking at is, let's sort of understand, is anything in Greg is the existing school and that the new construction is to the south. Currently, right now, where we're looking at the addition is all in existing playground space. So what we are also looking at and evaluating science is how can we build new on a site without really interrupting the day-to-day operations of the school and maintaining everyday functions of the school? What we're looking at is on the existing building is doing all of the Health Life Safety Amendments and renovations that has just voted to pass on, but then converting this space into your kindergarten and first grade. And it sets up real well, we put kindergarten on one side, first grade on the other, common spaces in the middle. But what it really lays out nicely is you've got existing parking, plenty of space for the site for playground. But what we're looking at is, you can imagine where the playground is at the south and recovered entryway to the main administrative area. What we're looking at is removing kind of that empty and that's where we would put the addition. But that addition would be welcoming to a secure, common welcoming center, if you will. Once they're in this little common area, administration is on both sides for the K1 area as well as a separate kind of administrative welcoming center for the pre-K center. But what we also wanted to do is kind of give a pre-K center its own identity and its own area. With pre-K having morning and afternoon sessions, different parents coming in and out of the building throughout the day, students coming in and out of the day, we wanted to allow them to have their own identity without also interrupting the day-to-day operations of the K through one area. So once you enter in the common area, then you can then go into the K1 area or make a left and go into the pre-K area. What we are looking at also was possibly also having that commentary also double as the cafeteria eating area for K and one, which would allow the donation space to free up and be used for true PE area instead of having to double up cleaning up in a PE class, which also frees up another space. So on the site, we're looking at the common area, secured entryway with a administrative pre-K area and then four flag classrooms. And each classroom would be set up for the pre-K environment. And then kind of renovating, the pre-K then has its own separate playground and the K1 area has its own playground area. And with that, we would also remove the temporary building that is located in the back area, still have parking on the north side and parking across the street. Questions on this concept, this idea?
Where's this storm shelter that Greg brought up?
Right now, we would be looking at probably this commons, the common area, which essentially located, so be able to get a whole existing building and new building built.
I brought it up because I was wondering if you were going to use the gymnasium, which would be existing, which you would have to modify to be able to act as its function. But you're considering that open area right there.
It would going to be easier to build it new as.
I understand that.
One of the things that we were in the discussion that we had too is that that would be the cafeteria area for the K1, right? And that frees up that entire gymnasium so we could be running PE classes in there. And then, the thing is, is that we would construct restrooms in that common area because you have to have restroom facilities in there as well and that could be a central point.
And we're planning on shipping in food, not cooking.
For this building, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this would be a serving center only, not a food center. My understanding is the way that is.
Yes. Because of the number of kids, you know, in terms of that. And then with the storm shelter capacity, it just depends upon when a storm would come through because we run half the kids in preschool. So, you know, so you have half in the morning and half in the afternoon. So whatever it is, you would still only have half your preschool capacity at that.
I'm saying, right now, there's this kind of big blocks, they're not really defined, this is what goes in this area, this is what goes in this area, but you've got enough square footage in there for the rest of the storage and mechanical space. Lay it out at this level and.
And I think too that one of the things, this is just the footprint tonight, the outside of what it is and what the existing. But as Kevin said, once we begin to move forward with this, then the inside of that kindergarten and first grade, that'd be retro to those kids. And then we'll be meeting with the faculty of the buildings, the teachers and of what that looks like. That's the next step from here as we begin the programming in terms of how that's going to look. And but the whole thing, it would be set for preschool and it would be set for K1 learners.
I believe there's a question in the back.
Could you point out the playground?
Playground area for the pre-K area would be in this little box right here. So we have a pink one right on the back, right in the playground area, not crossing any traffic, not crossing any other potential hazards. And then the playground for the K1 would be up in this little box area up top. Again, a direct exit right outside into the playground area, not crossing any traffic, not putting the student in any armored areas. That's two, we'll map with it.
Can you explain the traffic flow for buses, drop-offs, deliveries, things of that nature, what you would envision in the morning and then reverse or pick up at the appointed times?
So kind of what we've just kind of envisioned right now is there's a parking lot up top here where that could be used for faculty parking or deliveries. Parking lot across the street here that will be for additional overflow, faculty parking, visitor parking. But we also have a little strip along the road here that could be developed into either a quick drop-off area or bus lane drop-off area. We haven't got all the way through the traffic flow on this one, but it could also be that there should be a drop-off area on the north side here where it's going directly into the building into the gymnasium as a saving area. So there's multiple different options that we could look at. This little strip here where there's kind of makeshift parking right now, could be developed into a quick bus drop-off, in-and-out or parent vehicle drop-in and off as well as along the street.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to look at that, that street is not very wide and the way traffic seems to be following that from my experiences around that school. Now, does any of this planning address any of our drainage issues that we've had for a number of years around Colt School?
One of the Health Life Safety Amendment items that was on the list is to provide additional drainage all the way around the building in the form of underground floor drains that then tie into the new additionals. So that was one of the Health Life Safety items that we observed when we went out there because there was standing water at various places around the building. So we would tie in all those exterior rough drains into one central system along the building and take it off site.
Thank you.
Does Health Life Safety money or whatever have anything to do with revamping or getting rid of the boiler system that's in the original school?
Yes, on the on the survey, it was a completely mechanical system, new plumbing, new roof.
Yeah, the building will be completely renovated and set up for K1 learners. You know, the existing structure, it didn't matter whether it was Madison Park, this building or Russell, the roofs are shot and it all does need new HVAC systems. And that would be included in the whole renovation.
We would be renovating all of them that are up there now, as we found out.
Yes.
And eliminating the boiler system.
Absolutely. We haven't made it all the way through that. That's some of the things we want to talk with you on is what's your preferred system? We have our ideas as far as what's best for a renovation area, but none of those decisions have been made at this point, other than we know we need to do something with these systems.
I totally agree with you, absolutely.
Yeah, and where we're at this stage is really just a planning. No decisions have been made as just talking. As Greg had mentioned, the next steps are really diving into one-on-one conversations with yourself and the faculty of what they need in this building.
Yeah, ultimately, you know, this is the concept in terms of how this could be configured and what would make sense educationally for the children, since we know we've looked at what a PK building and the size of that building would be and the area would be to build such a facility, this is the way to put this together that actually provides the best, the best education. the best the best educational opportunities for for at this stage, early learners. And then as we get them ready to move to the next facility.
But playground back up there, for anybody who doesn't know, that area what A and one there, that's a very large area. I mean, there's a whole lot of there's a whole lot of grass out there. Once you take that building out, that even gives you that much more. That's that we could use the best.
Sure. And if we need to come back, we can come back. What we kind of presented here is uh again, we've got the kind of the floor plan, but then kind of some real early three-dimensional views of how this thing would look like, size-wise. But essentially, the whole new addition would be a single-story uh addition, which would pretty much match the existing height. You know, we might play with the comments area of raising and lowering that, just breaking up architecturally. Uh but those are some of the decisions. As we move past uh this initial concept phase, what will this building actually look? But this kind of gives you a representation of how the site from three different angles would look overall. Any other questions on Cole? Greg, you want to move on to?
Yeah, so.
Yes, I'm sorry. Uh that's we'll get into the time schedule at the end of the presentation with uh Cory with Hector will address those.
We got that tonight. Val broke out in terms of how what if what if, right? If it continues to move in terms of that, yes. Cory will talk about timelines.
Okay.
Yeah, so then I think as we began to research property that would be available uh for um a two-five facility, which actually, when you look at how our facilities are chunked up right now, right? We have a pre-K and then we have a K one center, right? So we combine those two and we have a PK one center. Then the next thing would be to take our two, two, three, four, five together, which makes sense that we have our intermediate school uh together with second through fifth grade. Um and then what type of property is available? The price of the property, what type of utilities do we have available to the site? Uh and then ultimately, uh Litchfield Unlimited um approached the district about the possibility of purchasing the old Millknot, I guess that's what it's called, right? Like Millknot property. Um in in taking a look at how we could put a two-five building in there, I think that in conversation with the city uh in terms of the the streets, in terms of uh how we access traffic, how we move things through. Uh and then how can a building fit within um within uh that piece of property? Uh and then making that a very useful uh piece of property in a school uh that that we have uh good access to. And then also, uh as we look to this this construction, you'll notice the number of classrooms. We do have additional rooms built on this for growth. Uh in in the event that that would happen, which would be a good thing. If Litchfield would grow, we can accommodate the growth of both facilities. Um and then we we started looking at how this facility would lay out and then looking at the existing site. Um one of the things that we did discuss is where the old building was poured down. It would be if we could move the site to the west and to the south a little bit, then we wouldn't necessarily be constructing that center over the top of that property. And um there's a reason for that. It's cost and then it is also, we could utilize that space, as you will see, for uh parking and in transportation flow. So we've kind of been working our way through a a design to at least show you a concept this evening. I have sent that concept to you ahead of this meeting uh so that you would have it. So Kevin?
So what we were looking at is this plan north is to the right. So if you're listening aside up there, it's been located ninety degrees. The State Street being down on this side and Jefferson on this side and Sergeant?
Sergeant.
Sergeant, yeah, on this end. Uh so plan-wise, what we wanted to do is again, look at those educational grade levels and how they work together and but still being uh separate from each other. And what we were looking at was, and we'll get to an overall site plan in a minute, but basic concept of the building would be a entry comments area again. It would be secured. Once there's in this entry comments area, then what we're proposing is one wing would be grades two through three. The other wing would be grades four through five. There's shared space in the middle. Uh gymnasium, storage space. So once you come into comments, kind of a gathering area, either for after-hours events or uh anything like that, you can go right into the the gym storage area. We're looking at the gym area being the storm shelter again, centrally located in the building. And then off to that would be the school administration, which has a view into the comment area. And then district administration on the other side. Uh looking at having a little parking lot on this side of the building for district administration visitors that can come right into the building without having to go through the rest of the building. Uh again, on the four through five area, you would have their own playground on one side of the building. Uh grades two through three, a playground on their side of the building. And then, you know, looking at different options, we've got a little area here that we might develop into an outdoor classroom area, a learning center, outdoor learning center on that side. Uh but having both sides kind of mirror each other, uh but still being able to keep your two through three on one side, four through five on another side. Uh let's look to the next slide. So overall, site plan-wise, uh this is kind of again, State Street over here. What we were looking at was this is where that existing building was that we're trying to stay away from and not build on top of. But that gave us a nice little area for parking, for parent parking, drop-off uh functions at the building. And what we were looking at was site circulation of this one also, where we were looking at uh being able to have parent drop-off, some circle around here and back out, being able to dump kids. Right off here, they go on the comment area. And Kevin, buses loop around from the top, dump kids off here and out and then circle back out on the road here. And then having a parking lot dedicated for district administration also. So concept-wise, massing-wise, the classroom additions would all be one story at one level. Uh again, the gym would be probably a story and a half because it doesn't have to be your IHSA regulation-sized gym, but you know, this size just still have uh PE education in it. And then uh probably a story and a half comment area in the middle also. One-story administration area. Questions on this concept layout or how we got to this point on this one?
You have one question. So the driveway entering onto State Street, you've got.
Darren? We're down next to two lanes.
On the one side and the buses exiting on the other.
We have a true circulation separation between bus drop-off and parent pickup drop-off.
Yeah, we're using the existing State Street, except we we're just running the connection up and around on the back side, you know, for for buses to come in and then circulate that way so that they're not involved in the parent traffic with that situation.
You've got some a few mistakes in this one, why? Point of the state there also, you know, to be able to pull out and, you know, not be.
And then we have the parents, you know, they have that opportunity on sergeant, you know, to just drop off too, right?
Yeah, we were trying to separate also a buses leaving and parents leaving.
Leaving.
We were having buses leave on State.
State and parents on sergeant.
Yeah, that's a nice drop-off.
Uh right now, the plan also would, this would just be a warming serving location, no food preparation after.
And then some eating?
Eating in the comment area also. This would allow that gymnasium still to be freed up for PE, good lunch being.
And so the other area with the all the tires, that's just for future growth. That's what we've got for now.
There could be.
Could be.
Yep. This property, you know, whatever that would be marked, yes.
Right here.
Yeah, to that area, yes, because that would be in in the future, that could be for growth. Yeah.
That's not in the plans.
Not in the plans right now, no. But the option is there.
Obviously, we must be on there.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I think for the site, I like the idea of uh buses coming down up State Streets, like the other direction.
Nine station, buses all circle around this corner.
Oh, yeah. And is there is there top of evidence to be able to go up another story? Are we going to promote? Is that it or is this just going to be?
Right, right now, we just have a one-story addition, but as you know, it would be real easy to take that off. A couple more classroom wings out on both of these. Maybe the reason for the playground uh.
And then also, the potential to get the other car up here too.
Yeah, and and the other thing too, and Kevin, go back to where the traffic flow is. So and then opposite, on the other side of the parking lot, there's a huge grass area that can also be used for outdoor activity.
Is that grass area being used for drainage a little bit?
Some, will be some of it for drainage area.
I figured you did, but that's a huge parking lot there if you're going to have to catch some.
Yeah, yeah, yep, yep.
Yeah, the number of parking, you know, we kind of just, you got to get into how many parking and that kind of good stuff. We've kind of.
That's based upon the staff.
Staff and visitors and. You bet, that's what happened in the town.
Like the city would like to, that'd be nice parking for the supermarket.
Yes. Yeah, really, uh you know, if you look at that 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 piece of property and then with what's being proposed on the south here, that really helps solidify our south end of town, you know, with particularly this facility right off of State Street, right off of Main Street, you know, people coming into the facility. Um and then you look at, you know, with Colt being completely renovated uh in in terms of that situation. Um you know, as as we looked at this too, and I do want to make this point too, that when you look at your facilities, once we complete this elementary plan, um there won't be too many school districts in the state of Illinois that can say that their oldest building is twenty-plus years old. This Colt will be completely renovated, will essentially be a brand-new building. This will be a brand-new building. Your high school was built in ninety-nine with your junior high. That facility with the upgrades that you've been doing, all of your facility needs will essentially be taken care of. And now it's just routine maintenance going out over the next thirty years. And I think that that's an important concept when you look at terms of budgeting, in terms of efficiencies, those types of things with your educational programming. And this isn't raising anybody's taxes. Uh this is all within the bonding that we do have available to us to make this happen. Um and I know that that several of you have asked me, what about the older facilities? Well, we've kind of got a plan in place for that too. Definitely that Madison Park, uh we we're putting enough money in. Uh we're figuring on the backside of a budget to tear that facility down. Just move it, be done with it. The discussion, this one could probably be sold. There's probably some value within Siler. Uh and then definitely, we look at Russell, but there's a potential that we take both of those facilities down. Um and that way, we're not leaving existing property, particularly Madison Park. And the fact that it sits right next to a beautiful park. Uh that situation, if we're abandoning that facility, we might as well take that facility down. And I've been having, you know, we've been having conversation about that to um uh to clean that, clean that site up too. And then that would be used for that for that property, uh you know, with that situation. Russell was on a corner lot, a little different situation with that property. Uh but this facility, definitely, we would put up for sale. In terms of its location, in terms of the architectural of the building, and this building probably has some light left in it. Uh you know, in terms of what somebody may want to use for the building. So I just want, I know some of you have emailed me and asked me that question, so I think we might as well just put that out there that that's what what our intention.
So there's a question on schedule before the walk-through. Very special. Again, this is kind of early going and again, Cory from Inspector Construction. So what we've uh put together here is just kind of a preliminary plan of how we get through what we call pre-construction. Uh and to try and get you guys a heads up on when we would think that actual construction would start. So depending on the design, the structure, how we're going to build those things, the construction durations may change a little bit. We'll talk in general about the overall duration of this as well. So where we are tonight is essentially project kickoff. We're here um on three percent conceptual plans. Um if the board feels like this is the direction or everyone's in that direction now, um they're going to start what they call programming meetings. And so these are basically surveys surveys of faculty. So your uh teachers will get interviewed, Greg, Bob, facilities folks. Uh a lot of people are going to be asked a lot of questions about, how do you like to teach? How do you like your room setup? How do you like mechanical systems? Those kinds of things. So that's what we call programming meetings. So it's just a lot of uh talking about what you guys like, don't like about facilities. And so those are, the goal for that would be obviously about ten days around, probably the end of this kind of came off like you're still or we'll go back. Basically, um by September eleventh or so, uh those programming meetings should be concluded. Uh they'll take that information, we'll roll that into what we call schematic design. And so schematic design is basically uh Kevin's way of taking words and answer some surveys and put it into conceptual drawings. And so similarly, to the mag where you've got floor plans and some math studies, kind of size of the building kind of thing. They'll take that and we'll bring it back and we'll say, okay, are we on the right track? And so whether that is yes or no, or I like this, I don't like that, I missed this, I didn't like that. Um but they'll take all those things and then that'll turn into what they call the design development. And so they'll say, okay, we got all these things right now, or I think we're going on the right track. They'll put together another basic floor plan, they'll have some elevations. Um and along that time frame, we're going to be looking by about the end of September, October, April. So relatively quickly, uh they'll get to a point where they're going to get to a floor plans and structure a number of a plan where you can then take that, do some pricing. Okay, so we'll go through and we'll check our explore costs. And we'll come up with what we're calling our budget review number one. We're looking at our budget review somewhere at the beginning of November. We'll have that conversation, that look in to say, hey, now, is what you guys like and want and the design we're going for on track with projects you guys have available to spend the cost? So hopefully, all those things are in track. You guys typically don't slow down while we're going through that process. We got a good feel as we're going through or we're talking about cost the whole way. That's just the first time where you're going to finally see or report saying, hey, here's what we think the cost is. Um we'll take that then into what we call sixty percent construction drawings. And these check-ins are basically the the start to stop, starting to stopping point of zones where we like to take a look at costs, to say, okay, are we still on track? Are we developing mechanical systems that are in business? Are we developing mechanical systems that are in the, in the budget that we have? Uh, L I D, T G A, all those things that we're gonna find, are we building, uh, are we still on the right track? We'll do that at the thirty, sixty, ninety percent track. And then what you'll see here is that budget review number three. We're looking at, uh, like basically the middle of January. We'll take that final look at the budget before we put this out on the streets for this. So, what we're doing is we're gonna say, okay, these guys are essentially done, other than some detailing. We've got a lot of information, a lot of good information, a lot of cost history that we can take and say, hey, before we put this out on the streets, at least everybody's fine, are we still on track at this point? And so, we'll do that about the middle of, middle of January. The goal right now, have bidding documents ready, uh, and complete, uh, right there in the middle of January. So, we'll put it out the bid at. Assuming we're on budget at the same time, and here's where we, where it puts all the drawings out on the street, we'll buy company work packages, and we'll take some better bids on all of it. We'll re- bring those bid openings we're shooting right now for end of February for that bid opening. So, we'd be looking at right the last week of February at some point, having those bids to open here publicly. And then we'll know anywhere we're on track with the budget, or are we not? Um, take about ten days to award those contracts. Somewhere in that point, uh, we need you guys to take a look at that, uh, and say, hey, we like the budget. All the contractors we deal are, are capable of doing the work, we'll go ahead and award the contracts. And that would put us at a point of beginning construction. I've kinda put a thirty-day window in here. So, somewhere between the middle of March and the middle of April, where we would shoot to start construction. And I do that because obviously, you guys know what other, what they call construction, those kinds of things. We don't wanna open up construction just to have a big brainstorm and things like that. So, somewhere in that middle of March, the middle of April time, where we would start construction. So, I stopped my schedule here, but obviously, that's not where construction stops, right? So, we're just getting started now. So, what we're here to try to tell you is basically, we're gonna be starting somewhere in March, April, October, twenty twenty-one. So, our goal is, is to have all of this construction work done for year, fall of twenty-two, including. And so, we've got some options, right? So, at Colton, we can either start renovations day one, you know, heaven forbid, you're remodeling at that point and you can get in there and start renovation work at that point. We did that for some districts this year. Um, but hopefully, all of our kids are back in school, they're working full time. We're gonna do the construction safely either the way. Uh, we can use that first summer, twenty twenty-one, to do renovation work at Colt. If we're confident enough of the materials and availability, if we get that construction work done, to a point where you can use that skill. If that would be the one. And then we can lock that off, make it safe, and do the addition or addition access. That's one option for, for Colt. The other way we can do that is we can do the addition. And we can do that addition, have that addition ready, get the new bill, uh, over on State Street done, and moved into, and then renovate all at the end of the construction process. So, that may be summer of twenty-two that we're here doing that, or it may be leading into the fall. So, the goal would be, we start, start construction starting in twenty twenty-one. We can wrap it up pretty easily in the fall.
I think what we've been talking about the schedule in terms of that, ultimately, the, the, since Colt's in play, we need a place for the Colt students to go, therefore, the new building gets going, right? And then we can also bring Russell offline at the same time. And then we come back and pick Colt, um, you know, in terms of that. So, we're still working on that type of thing. It may be, instead of a, 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 a fall, it might be a December move into a Colt. But in, in terms of how we, how we package that. But we definitely need a place for the students at Colt to go first. Um, and then, the thing in our discussion is on that, uh, on the property off of State Street there, that's a blank site. So, that's a pretty easy site to construct. You don't have any, any other things going on, on that, on that site, and you can, that's a clean bill. In terms of that. So, we'll, we'll look at things and we'll, we'll figure things out, but, you know, a lot of it just comes, you know, that we get the process going, right? And, uh, I think everybody is kinda, kinda ready to, you know, you, the district's talked about this for a while and, um, you know, in terms of getting this going, and you're in a position that you can do this. We've got good, good, uh, folks with F D M and Becker, uh, on, on board with this. And, uh, you know, then the next phase will be, I know the principals are looking at it about the program, and maybe now I'm gonna talk to you tomorrow about that, if that's all gonna work, right? Um, I gotta kinda get the board impressed first, right? And then we'll worry about that tomorrow. But, you know, things have been moving, as I've indicated to you, that we have not, um, forgot this discussion or this process, but, um, you know, that's where we are. Ultimately, you're involved in all of the decisions, budget, materials, all of that comes between you guys. You make, you make the budgetary decisions, you make the decisions on, on how, how things are going to be.
I definitely think it's wise to, even the structure you're gonna do on existing buildings, have it thinking during that time. I don't see that to be a good next, and I'm sure that adds to the expensive price of safer site. Uh, one question I did have for both of you, I know initially, we talked about that Russell site, Russell site. Um, in comparing, is there kind of a list of pros and cons of why we might have started doing one versus the other? Is site size, money, um, just kinda wanted some background.
So, renovation costs, if you look at the renovation costs, uh, by State and East, and Russell and Colt are about the same. So, you're gonna be spending the same amount of money renovating either that site or this site. And when we really started getting into looking at what all we're gonna need in one of these other buildings, the site at Colt just offers so much more with land, playground area, as you mentioned, drop-off area with buses and parents. Uh, it was a tighter sign than Russell, although we'll have all of that site circulation fitted out at Colt yet. It allows us more opportunity for it. Uh, and also at Russell, there's a lot of site grading change as well. The whole, that purpose building itself, you have to come down, how do we get that down? How do we bring that grade back up? It's still actually a four level here, with a street level down here. Playground level, a different level down here, tying in. And one of the things that we like to do is not make multiple levels in a, in education. If you get everything on one level, it's a little better for students. But just, a lot of it really came down to a lot of the site constraints of Russell versus Colt. And also looking at some of the concerns of kinda spreading out some of that traffic during the year also. One of the concerns was, well, you have everything on the north side of town, except there's a lot more vehicles on that north side of town when schools started ending. Being able to spread it out, still, still being able to also have a presence on the south side of town. Having kind of that, it's almost like that progressive build, you're starting kindergarten, and you're working your way up to the north side of town. So, a lot of it had to do with the site constraints of Russell and what Colt was there.
And then the multipurpose room was big, okay, for P E, okay? Because we knew the multipurpose room at Russell had to go, okay? It's, it's outlived itself. And that might have been part of the original building in nineteen, early nineteen hundred, a slab of it, a portion of it, right? And when we started looking at the educational programming and, and that type of situation, it just, all of a sudden, it dawned on us in a meeting one day that, wow, you know, this, we need to take a look at this facility. And then it just kinda grew into, you know, how it, how it could better serve us.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Have you checked utilities along St. John that would go underneath those buildings?
We have not gotten that far yet.
Have you checked with Ameren about their old coal tar site to the north of the building?
No, I have not. You're talking about the State Street or, uh, the new two-three-five building?
Yes.
No, we have not gotten into that part.
The, the, I'll include the, and the old Ameren, or the Ameren fenced-in lot used to be a coal gasification plant back in the nineteen hundreds. And when, uh, I think it was in Taylorville, they had a big lawsuit over coal tar and cancer. Uh, Ameren got busy and, and checked out the sites and did that, and it was, they found coal tar in that, uh, fenced-in area, and that's why it's still fenced in. And, you know, they, the old, uh, Big Four ran along, had a railroad, railroad tracks there, and, uh, used to feed into the, uh, physical sports, the warehouse. Uh, so that's an old railroad right away. So, what's underneath there, couldn't tell you. Not sure that I'd wanna go looking.
So, as we progress into the next, if the board decides, yes, this is the way we want to keep proceeding, one of the immediate next steps is getting that whole site survey of where all the existing facilities are underground. But also a geotechnical, we'll get a proposal from a couple firms to go and do a geotechnical survey. The common, if you swallow orange, uh, you know, well done, the ground, pull the dirt out, this layer's made up, this, 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 do a whole site analysis survey of what is on that site. Not saying they're gonna find everything, because we have to fill in every, people on center, but it'll give us a very good, heads-up warning if there's anything on that site. But, yeah, if there's any information you know of, feel free to, but Greg's gonna wanna pass it along to us.
Yeah, we've talked with Y N C A, we were gonna put a Y N C A, so some of that will spin back.
I'm sure Ameren will do the interview, please.
Is there a question? Thank you for your time, before a very exciting, uh, next step.
Thank you both very much for your evening. We're gonna move on to, uh, the superintendent's update.
Yeah, so, as we end this evening, I'll give you a quick synopsis of where we are, uh, as we approach our Labor Day, um, in, in terms of, um, what's happening within the district. Um, we did get day nine in today, uh, so, and the principals will talk a little bit about how hybrid is going, as well as the remote, and then you have information in front of you with numbers, uh, that type of thing. But I'm not going to get into that. So, what we're discussing tonight, the team that met last Friday, and we had been in consultation with our teachers and our support staff, and, uh, uh, the consensus of the team was, is that we're gonna remain hybrid following the Labor Day, and that we're just gonna keep things status quo, uh, with, uh, the remote on Friday, and, um, keep operating hybrid indefinitely until we see, uh, some other, other variables, uh, in terms of that. But, um, you know, I will say that, um, as I see, uh, high school kids every morning, uh, kids are doing a phenomenal job as they come into our facility. Our parents have been supportive of, of what we're attempting to do here. Uh, I, I go to every elementary building, junior high building every day to see how things are going. I stuck my head in classrooms to see how the instruction's going, um, as well as talking to staff, and seeing how that, how that's working. You know, as we indicated in our last board meeting, this was a big undertaking to get to where we are right now. And, uh, it continues to be an undertaking each and every day. And, um, uh, I think that there's, there isn't any reason at this point in time to change how we're doing things, um, uh, a- a- at this point. Um, it's still early, uh, in terms of numbers, um, in terms of, you know, what's, what's happening within the area, uh, in, in, in terms of that. So, I will say with, with, um, with our, uh, confirmed positive on Friday, our plan worked really well. Dr. Cape and I spent a good deal of time Friday evening together, uh, with our nursing staff and then the Montgomery County Health Department. And, uh, our plan is in place, uh, to the point that Montgomery County Health definitely indicated that the, uh, plan was well put together in terms of what we have to do to mitigate things. Uh, and we were able to mitigate that quickly, um, in, in terms of that, and then have school again today. Um, one of the things that the principals are going to talk a little bit tonight is about remote learning. Um, and, and as we looked at remote learning, it still goes back to parents had a choice. And they have a responsibility as well in this situation. And so, this is student, um, that our principals and our teachers, personally, was around Friday, and heard teachers calling parents, and seen principals call parents. There's been a lot of conversation about students that are doing something or nothing. But I think that the, the situation is that needs to be communicated is, you don't pass, you, you don't pass your work and do your work, you're not passing. That sounds harsh, but you know what? That's the way it works. We can't do the work for them. The internet, the library is mentioned, that she's had quite a few people up at the library. They can also go to parking lots, to school parking lots to get what they need. We're working on hotspots. Again, it was a choice, I'm not telling, that's up to people that made the choice to go remote or not remote. But the fact of the matter is, students have to do their work, whether we're hybrid or we're fully remote. If we were fully remote, we'd be facing the same situation, if not greater. Folks need to understand that there's not a free pass this year. And our principals will be communicating out to parents that there's not a free pass. Now, high school, it's built in automatically. You don't get the credits, you don't move on. But at certain grade levels, you're going to have to demonstrate proficiency, whether you were in attendance at hybrid or you were remote. And by doing the remote work, you should be able to demonstrate that if you do your work. And I think that, and we're not the only district struggling with this, trust me. My wife has a hundred and seventy remote students right now. She's called eighty parents today, eighty of kids that haven't done anything. So, it's just not a lichfield thing. It's, this is what happens in this type of setting. And a lot of it is, when we look at it is, watch the video the teacher puts out, just don't jump to the word. That's frustrating on behalf of our staff when they bypass this information. So, I'm saying the fact that this is a two-sided approach, it's a fifty-fifty deal. Parents and students have fifty percent, and we have fifty percent. You do your work. And we've sent Mr. Blevins out to houses. So, and we've had principals and staff go to houses to fix technology if they're having problems. We had a technology night at Colt and Russell. Those are opportunities for parents to come get assistance if they're having trouble with the technology. Yeah, those are provided. Whether you took the advantage to do that, that's, you know, unfortunately, if you didn't, those opportunities were there, or the opportunities to call people. Mr. Faber has gone out, worked on, showed people how to do this on their front porches. So, we are making an effort. And now, you know, the... And now, you know, parents are gonna get some good news and some bad news. The bad news is, you don't start to engage, whether that be contacting the teacher or contacting folks, we're gonna have to take a different approach to it. Um, and I think that that, that's how we need to approach this. It's early, it's early, the first week, we were getting things coordinated, this, last week was the end of the second week, and that's, that's the way we have to do it, um, as we move forward. And, um, if we can get some work, that's great, and we get some participation, um, in, in, in terms of that situation. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Favor, he can talk about his pre-K, uh, one situation. And you do have these reports in front of you.
Just some quick statistics of most current numbers. Pre-K, we have a total of one hundred students enrolled. In-person is eighty-four, split over two sessions, AM and PM, and also two cohorts, A and B. That is not on your paper, by the way. Uh, we have sixteen remote learners at pre-K. That focuses more on parent interaction, getting kids into the app and those sorts of things, uh, not quite as much technology involved with pre-K kids, but again, trying to meet with them via some Google meets, contacting parents, et cetera, et cetera. Kindergarten, we have a total of sixty-nine enrolled, fifty-four in-person, fifteen remote. Yes, I did my math correctly, I hope, if those numbers don't add up, please, I did not use the calculator, so, you know. First grade, we have eighty-eight total enrolled, sixty-six for in-person, and twenty-two remote. Okay? So that's just kinda what we're dealing with. On my report, um, attendance at Madison Park is counted as logging into Clever and also showing evidence of completed work. Parents and kids have a variety of ways of doing that, cause the young, the learners are younger. Google Classroom is not quite as intuitive for a kindergarten first grader as it is for my second grader, that I'm having experience with what's going on in second grade, or my middle school kid, or my high school kid. So I've got kids at all different areas of the district, and it gets easier for kids to be more self-sufficient. At Madison Park, logging into Clever, showing evidence of completed work, parent communication is key, because we do know that some of the kids aren't getting on until mom and dad are off work, the sitter can do some, sometimes older brothers and sisters, I'm in that situation, sometimes grandmas and grandpas. So we're providing some flexibility for our K-one kids, making sure there's an opportunity to get on and work. Login to Clever, yes, but we also need to see that that work is coming in, be it with the teacher via photos or whatever they're doing to get that work turned in, and they're working with parents, not just giving you, here is the only way you can do that, not for our young learners, it's a little bit different. So, with that said, number of students missing days one or more, I have thirty-nine kids missing one or more days. These are for my remote learners, and that's my full remote learners, and my kids that when they're at home under a hybrid day, so the days we're using technology to learn. I've had thirty-nine kids miss one or more days, for a total of seventy-nine days missed. So if you take all of those thirty-nine kids, you count how many days they missed altogether in one bucket, they've missed seventy-nine days together as a group, okay? They've been in school for two, four, possibly six days now as a cohort, I believe, is that right? I think so. Two days, first week, two days, same, we were on day one of week number three, okay? So it's not quite an exact science here, cause we're also trying to give some benefit of the doubt. My kids that were in attendance today, some of them are in attendance right now at seven o'clock at night after supper, mom and dad are doing homework with them right now, we're getting stuff turned in at this time of night, we've been seeing it roll in. So we know parents are, are working with their kids. Number of students missing one or two days of remote learning or cohort, you know, at home behind the computer is twenty-seven. Number of students missing three or more days of remote attendance are twelve. So my kids, there's a group of twelve that we're really focusing on, that are missing a bunch of days. A few of these kids are missing one here, one there, parents are in communication, we know what's going on. There's a small group that are missing a little more than what we'd like, and we're working with those individuals. Some of it is technology-related, some of it is sitter-related, et cetera, and I will say, and this is another downfall we've had, is some are treating Friday like a three-day weekend. Friday is a school day still. I understand, and we're, and with our little kids, there's Friday, there's Saturday, there's Sunday. I get it. So I have a little more flexibility, but I also don't have biology, chemistry, so it's a little bit different for my older kids. They can also be self-directed. Like, my high school daughter, my freshman's expected to do her work on Friday, okay? So that's just kinda where I'm coming from at that, trying to be reasonable, but also we have to see the work, they have to do some of the work to get the benefits of going to school online. Questions for me?
All right, um, so I got a kid at seventh grade, a kid at fourth grade.
Yes, sir.
I think a lot of what parents are dealing with is this, that sitter, grandparents do struggle with that. And they kinda look at the work, and they stare at the work, and they can't do the work cause grandma can't explain the work, and then mom and dad are working these hours, coming home, they're trying to sit. Hats off to the parents, they are trying to pick up the ton. I have had many days where I've sat there for three hours, and it's tough, and I think, uh, whatever we can do to help the parents get past that, because the parents are really, I think, giving it an effort to get it done, I think it's just, uh, man, I think the remote learning is a tough situation, no matter how we wanna look at it and try to skin it. Um, I think numbers are starting to go down, uh, nationwide, and that five-day of school is so, so important for our kids. And the quicker we can get back to five days, the better. This is proven it, I think everybody that's gonna be talking is gonna prove it, we've got to get back to in-person or ASAP. We can look at the numbers all day, these kids need in-person instruction. My kids are struggling with it, good kids, they like school, they wanna be in school, we should provide it to them. That's all.
The Baptist Church is coming online after Labor Day. Information has been sent out, they're taking signups for cohorts, Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, whatever is your off day, they're taking kids in. So if you are close enough and can get access to that in town, they are taking signups for that, starting with the earliest, but they're taking siblings of kids that are in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, so you're not gonna send one kid, but you need to contact the church. They are setting that up, it is not a school program, but it is something they are offering, and there may be other churches in the community that are wishing to do the same, is what I'm being told. So, that's not a complete solution, but it does give parents some options as well.
Mr. Favor, has the church, uh, the Baptist Church said, um, if there's people that wanna donate, uh, do anything to try and help as far as, I don't know if they're providing any more or anything, if people wanna donate to go try and help?
I have not, they have not discussed that with me yet, but I will, uh, I will ask for that information.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
On the note, we, um, we've been working with our legislators, and they did give us some labor for meals through December, which is gonna be huge. So that information, I'll be attending the webinar on, uh, Wednesday to do that, so they have extended the labor so that they all can see. So, for the rest of the day, that is a huge, a huge movement today, that the USDA made that move today, that's huge. We've been fighting, uh, for that, you know, to get back to that, so, I'll get the district, we will get the district decision following that, uh, what our, uh, I'll tell you. Mr. Higer?
Yes, sir. The Colton Elementary School, um, our teachers are working really hard, and that both of the hybrid and the remote learners, um, as you can see in the information that I gave you, our cohort A, for second grade, has forty-one students, third grade has thirty-eight students, for a total combined on cohort Monday, Wednesday, A day is seventy-nine students. Cohort B for second grade is twenty-three, third grade, we have thirty-five, for a total combined on Tuesdays and Thursdays, with fifty-eight students in the building. Obviously, that is our, uh, lower number day. Um, total hybrid kids, they're at Colt, between second and third grade, is a hundred and thirty-seven students that we have in the building throughout the week. Um, our numbers, as you can see to the right of that, our highest number of days that we have of non-student attendance would be twelve students, okay? Um, as we're moving down, you can see our remote learners, at second grade, we have twenty-four remote learners, they, they don't come to school, they are sitting at home and doing all of their work from home. Third grade, we have nineteen of those students, for a total of forty-three students altogether. And as you can see, I would like to point out, as you can see, the number of attendance days is actually, has gone down. We have, uh, teachers and myself and my secretaries that are making phone calls daily, checking in with parents, and seeing if there's means and what's going on.
So, uh, when I look at eight seventeen, I look at third grade remote, there's nineteen students, does that mean only three of the nineteen logged on that day?
No, that's three of them that did not.
Three of not, okay.
That's our absolute.
Got it.
Mr. Higer, I follow that. Okay, so we have a total of a hundred and eighty-three students right now at Colton Elementary. I'm gonna flip to Russell, if you don't mind, I'm gonna just take questions for both of us. Russell School, fourth grade cohort day, we have twenty-five students. Fifth grade cohort day, we have thirty students, with a combined total of fifty-five students on Mondays and Wednesdays in the building. Cohort B, twenty-nine at fourth grade, twenty-nine at fifth grade, for a total of fifty-eight on Tuesdays and Thursdays in attendance, on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Total hybrid students for Russell Elementary is a hundred and thirteen students throughout the week. Our fourth grade remote, if you look at them, they actually mirror Colts, they just flipped up. We have nineteen at fourth grade and twenty-four at fifth grade, for a total of remote of forty-three students. We have a total of a hundred and fifty-six students that are attending Russell Elementary, either hybrid or remote. Again, if you look at our remote days, since our teachers and, uh, staff have been contacting and reaching out to parents and talking with them, our remote attendance has, uh, run down, our, the number of absences has gone down, so, by making phone calls and reaching out and having contact. Any questions from the board on our attendance? Anything with the numbers that are in front of you, with, uh, the either four of us, I would be happy to answer any questions, either here for this or anything else for the building.
Have you talked to parents, um, as to why, um, students aren't, have not attended? Um, is it due to illness, is it due to they can't, they?
Some of it is due to illness, but it's not, but it's stomach bugs or different things like that that they've had, um, and different things like that, um, others we can't get ahold of, so we have Larry, Mr. Blevins, that's been going out, we sent him out, he's checking with families, trying to get contact with them, we're trying to get to the bottom of why some of them are not logging on to do the work, um, but as I said, we are having sort of success with seeing some of those. Another thing that we've really been talking with parents and trying to get them to understand is, they only need to log on, is all we ask for them to do, by three o'clock, and that's just to sign into the Clever app, but work to be completed can be completed at any point in time in the evening or whatever, we just ask for that attendance by three if possible. But even, there are families that we make allowances for every single day, because we understand, like Mr. Higer says, you have grandparents and other people like that, daycare workers that they're working with, um, and so we make those allotments and exceptions, and then we'll fix the attendance the day after, if we have questions, we're contacting families.
Mr. Favor, were you seeing a common thing amongst those that you were able to speak with as to, was it illness or was it just other, um, issues?
Uh, most of it's, uh, they're working with parents, they're getting home, or they had some technical difficulty, that we've gotten worked out, we've got one family we're working with, they just have no Wi-Fi, and they may not have made the right choice at that point in time, so.
Okay, thank you.
May I mention really quickly about our tech night that we hosted in that at Colton Russell? It was wonderful to see, uh, the families that came, we had our teachers working literally one-on-one with families, showing them exactly how to log in, uh, to get to their Google Classroom, how to find the assignments, parents, uh, getting to ask their questions of, well, what does this mean, what does that mean, how do I do this, and getting their answers immediately, it's been wonderful. We even had parents that came, have called or emailed and said, thank you for that night, it was great, I was able to help my neighbor, and I was able to help my, you know, my cousin and stuff like that, because they didn't have it, you know, the question, the answers, how to get to that. So it's having a trickle-down effect, so it was, it was really nice to see the attendance, but we had a bold call.
That's great, thanks for hosting that, I thought it was a better deal.
That was all the teacher's idea, so, uh, they, you know, pray for that.
Anything for Mr. Higer? Anything else?
Dr. Favor.
Hi.
Hello.
Okay, uh, middle school's a little bit different from Easton Elementary, and, uh, we have a total of two-hundred-and-ninety-two kids, if you look at our core remote and our hybrid kids combined, um, we have two-hundred-and-seven which are hybrid kids, and we are, we were able to kinda work whatever cohort size is bound to work now, our max is ten instead of thirteen. Um, as far as remote kids, we have about seven that we have tried to, I mean, Larry's gone to homes and has left notes on the door saying, hey, please call someone. Um, of those seven, all of them had transit issues last year, trying to get there to school, so it's one of those things where every teacher has office hours almost every day between one-thirty and three-thirty. Every Friday, they're scheduling kids in, um, we're now trying to do virtual map testing, which is a chore in itself, and if you look at the number of virtual learners, sixth grade at fourteen doesn't seem like a lot, but that's still a lot of kids that you're trying to make sure that you're getting it, they're doing a pretty good job. The two of those kids are same family, and they were just having the internet installed last week, so we're hoping that maybe now that they're able to get on. Uh, seventh grade with thirty-eight remote learners, that's over a third of their overall class population. And the thing that we've, uh, told is, now we are finishing up map testing, because usually on Friday a week, we can get through map testing in a week and a half, two weeks. Now, when you're seeing kids every other day trying to get map testing done, um, and what's good is, we have found three kids that identify as pre-altro, just because we've done the map testing in that. So for us to be able to make sure that we are starting kids at the right levels, we want them to be placed appropriately, and we have taken our time to get that done, um, and the teachers, imagine having to prep for A, A in person, A remote, B in person, B remote, and then all remote, that's their daily, and they take it very personally when they have kids that maybe haven't logged on. Um, the trend that they're noticing, though, is when a mom or dad may be off work, because then they'll turn in like ten things, like one after the other. So when they are having maybe somebody that's helpful, or parents will say, I'm not at home, and I don't know if they're working or not, cause I can't make sure, because nobody's there watching them. Um, teachers continue to record and put things out for all learners, and I know, once we get beyond the map testing, then of course, there is the, I mean, they're equally as excited to get with kids and get this thing going, but we wanted to make sure we didn't rush and misplace anybody with that ten, eleven weeks that we had off in the spring, really essential that we had those kids placed, because we're just knocking on the door to high school. Um, I think the thing that, that, uh, people maybe don't understand about what's happening in the middle schools, we can't, I can't let one teacher be the full remote person, cause everybody's specialized, not everybody can teach math, not everybody can teach, you know, the, the reading part of that. So for us to be able to try to leverage as much time, teachers, um, eat when the kids eat during their lunchtime at ten-thirty, and then they spend from one-thirty until a lot of them, again, there were a handful there when I left here to come to the meeting today, still trying to get ahold of parents, and holding, uh, Google meets, and just trying to answer questions. I have a parent coming up tomorrow, I called her Friday, that she's having a tech issue, and she's going to meet me at the building tomorrow morning, so we can get her squared away. So, uh, I think once we get the technology to where some of the, the kids are understanding, and I think, you know, what Doc had said, when the kids realize, so I, I told eighth grade kids, when, when I talked to them, been able to hold them, if you don't know what you have to do, I can't let you go to the high school, you have to have the skills to be able to go on. I don't want you to go and not be successful, cause then there'll be five years, six years with Mr. Hoster, and that's not gonna do anybody any good, but as far as logging on, ninety-two percent of our kids are logging on on a daily. Now, they're logging on, some of them, but they're not completing the work timely, so once they get that part figured out, I think it's all going to flow a whole lot better, but, um, really, the only kids that are not remote are the ones that say they have younger siblings, or some of them themselves have a health condition that they just didn't wanna be in person at that point, but the kids that are there are enjoying it, um, and it really is a large effort on the teachers, on the support staff, and they are And it really is a large effort on the teachers, on the support staff, and they are doing an exceptional job. I can't say enough for the planning and preparation, so.
Is the high school, now when you're the remote on high school, don't they go on a separately different program that the teachers don't have to contact them at high school? Is it, are they through edgenuity? My question would be on the remote kids, if we got the middle school, do they not maybe need to be put on a separate program away from the teacher where it's all driven by a different program where the teacher doesn't have to then be responsible for the remote kids, just the hybrid kids? Has that been talked about? I mean, because it should be somewhat of a privilege if you selected to come to hybrid that you get that teacher's full attention. And if you selected remote, well, that's great. You're remote, but we got a different program for you and that shouldn't be.
At least they do though, Greg. They do give, the kids get the full attention of the teachers while they're there during the day.
Yeah, but on the hybrid, but they're doing the same work as remote kids right now.
I think pretty much.
Yeah, it's the same schedule. I've just been looking at it. But the, my, my thing is that if you're a hybrid student, you're coming there to get the in-person instruction and then to do that work the next day. As opposed to I selected to be remote, maybe I should just be on the edgenuity program. That way the teachers can focus more on their, you know, not having to prep for the remote and then prep for the hybrid. I could see how that could be, well, what do I do with the remote kids today? What do I do with the hybrid, you know, type of thing. I don't know.
Well, edgenuity though, for us, it's, it's more or less of a supplement. I mean, we don't have the ability to check.
They needed a purpose of program for middle school life, for the high.
I got it, okay. So maybe you just look at that.
Any other questions for that, David? Thank you.
Mr. Hoster?
High school, we actually run three reports. I've given you samples, just simple samples of two of the three. The reason I didn't give you the other one, it's basically name-based for student privacy rights. But I will summarize that data for you. First of all, our in-person days, the attendance at school is almost perfect. We just had a handful of absences. And also considering those that are quarantined, as long as they log into Clever, you can count them, we've only had a handful of absences. On their non-in-person days, in other words, the hybrid off days, I calculated, we have a ninety-five percent attendance rate or a five percent absentee rate for Hybrid A and a six-point-two percent absentee rate for Hybrid B. You do not have those numbers though, but I'm just reporting those. And once again, what you do have, you can turn to that first page. One of the data we look at, this is a sample of it right now. Of course, I redacted the student names. So it probably doesn't make sense, but this is one report we look at per week. And it'll tell you by student, the total amount of time the student has spent in Clever, okay, and in edgenuity. That may be a little bit misleading. I don't know how many of you have high school students. Well, actually, I do know. I don't know how many of you, like Mr. Kress put out a video today. One of the problems we had is students were going into Clever, but they weren't clicking on the right app. They were going right into Google Classroom and therefore their attendance wasn't counting. So it's kind of a good thing. These numbers might be a misleading to a certain extent that kids were on doing their work more. But this is one report we look at, but it's probably better to flip that page and look at the next report. Once again, the names and actually I apologize, the columns are redacted there. What you're looking at is our hybrid, I'm sorry, our strictly remote students. And in the first column, if you look at that column, it's actually percent of class completed. And the second column would be their current grade or percentage. And looking at that, we have edgenuity set up for actually twenty weeks. We extended the window past Christmas for those that, you know, might need to do an extra time. So if you figure that, these kids should be working at a pace of about five percent, five percent per week. Now granted, the first week is a little bit difficult for the kids to get rolling. But so we look at that first column, when you look at those numbers after two weeks, should be around ten percent or higher. Okay, that's one indicator. Forget the attendance, if those kids in each one of those classes are at or around ten percent, that's what we're looking at. And then of course, we're looking at their current grade as well. Does that make sense? Does everybody follow me? I apologize once again that those columns were not labeled. So then what we've done is we've gone ahead, and you might notice little dots. I have a little bit of fancy of the report. I'll just hold up here with the names. But we, we've kind of indicated, I don't know if you can see that, each student gets a certain color. It's red, yellow, and green. And right there, we're going to do that on a weekly basis and that's going to dictate the amount of attention that they get. But right now, the plan is this, all of our enrichment teachers are still acting as mentors. They're going to contact their remote students once a week. So even the green kids on the list, they get a call once a week, a check-in from their enrichment teacher, their mentor, they check grades, attendance, how things are going. They ask if they need any help, et cetera. Now the yellow, the students that are marked yellow, and if you look at this, they may be on track time-wise and off-grade-wise or they may be doing well in other classes but one. But the yellow will get their enrichment teacher as well as the individual classroom teacher. Does the data make sense when you look at that? As far as time on task and the percent, you might see some kids with Ds or an F in there. They're marked yellow. They might be doing okay in other classes. And they will get follow-up with the classroom teacher and offer of help. And then we have the red students. And you know, I know Miss Abel asked about like, what are the reasons? If you look at most of these, the red data, like I said, you don't have all the data I have, but these kids are just simply not logging out. And now we reached out, they're going to get the attention of both the enrichment teacher, the classroom teachers, and administration. And right now, today, I got my first complaint about all the phone calls that the certain parent was receiving. I said, there's a simple solution for that. That's to have your kid start working. So you know, the plan is we're going to pester these people and we are going to hold them accountable though. And like Doc first and I said, in high school, it's a matter of credit. If they don't get the credit, they need so many credits to graduate. I'm going to tell you right now, I expect some issues with remote learning and with past failures for the first semester. Right now, in analyzing the data, let me, I don't have it, it's basically split into thirds. If I was just to simply say, we have eighty-one full-time remote students. And by the way, not every remote student has a full seven classes through edgenuity to answer your question, Mr. Hyer. Some of them like, for example, have remote PE or remote band, et cetera. So we can't say that they need to be five to seven hours per class. But at the end, and I have it here somewhere, just bear with me. We have eighty-one full-time remote students. I'll find it here. I'll show up on pages. I broke it down to how many red, yellow, and green we have. And they're basically split in thirds. But we have more green, then more yellow, or a little bit more yellow and fewest red. However, it's like twenty-eight and I can't find what I did. I did break that down somewhere. I just can't find it. But we broke it down. I want to say it was like twenty-eight students are in the green column, twenty-four in the yellow, and twenty-some in red. But that's broken down. It's roughly broken down into thirds is what I'm saying of the eighty-one. Like I said, that's the plan of attack on how we're going to address it. It's also understandable, it's only the second week of school. The nature being until I think we get on some of these kids, I want to say most of these yellows have made some sort of effort. I think they're going to be okay. We are concerned about the red students. Like I said, there are twenty-some students that really are going to be high priority. But we're going to do our best to contact them. And we'll see what happens. But you'll, you'll see too, there's a direct correlation between time spent usually and the grade that they're receiving.
How old are the high school learners? Are they doing okay on the remote thing?
Well, the next, yeah, if, like I said, it's a five percent and a six-point-five percent as far as logging in, which is kind of high. Kind of high absentee rate. I think the main thing with that probably is the hotspots. But then again, they have the opportunity to, they're more mobile than a little kid, so they can either drive or walk or do those things. So, but we are addressing them right at the school.
Thank you.
And I know I'll find that, those exact numbers because I did calculate them all for the red, yellow. That's the approach we're taking.
Thanks, Mr. Bailey.
No, so.
Can I clarify one thing?
Sure.
About attendance in Clever. Clever is a portal that we use to actually get into it. Once they log into their Chromebook, they need to click on an app within Clever. Just logging into Clever doesn't do it. They have to log into either edgenuity, Google Classroom, Google Docs, you know, it's sheets, Excel. Not Excel, because that's not in Google. But any one of the things that are in that dashboard. So parents, if they, they've seen the Clever dashboard, there's many apps in there. They just have to click on one of them at least. And, and stay in there for a little bit, not a click in and click out, but it's basically, they click in that, then that, that note.
And two other points. One, it does go with special ed students. Most of them will be attending five days a week. And those that are remote, their, their teachers will contact them every day, every day. And also I did find my summary data. We have twenty-two students at the red level, twenty-eight yellow, thirty-one green. So I did have that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, when you've got the data to see what time, I think that as long as you, you know, we've talked about this as an administration, as long as you give a choice of remote, you're still going to have the same number of people most likely select remote. So you know, as, as you move forward or as we move forward, that there you make that an option. Because the remote is the remote, right? Some of these folks will still select remote, whether you're going five days a week in this situation or not. And actually, the number of remote that we have is following suit to what we put the survey out in June. And basically, we have a third of our student population that is going to remote. And their parents said that from the beginning for whatever that reason is. But as long as under the current circumstances that we have, if, if we continue to offer the remote, you're still probably going to see roughly a third of your parents elect remote. And then you have to, you know, ultimately decide what is remote learning, what to look at. Definitely, if we were to move back to five days, then the hybrid students definitely would come back five days a week, right? But you still have those remote students that are out there. As long as that option is there. Well, the other option is if they go homeschool and then we don't provide the curriculum, right? In terms of that setting, if they elect to go homeschool and then ultimately when the students do come back, then we do have to assess them to determine where they're going to be placed in the academic, in the academic area that we have. So I think that in, you know, with, with the situation as it continues to unfold, that ultimately, we get to that point, that'll have to be a decision of the board in terms of whether you want to allow remote as an option or not. You know, so that, excuse me. That's something that's going to have to be looked at in terms of, you're still going to have those folks, that, that, you know. Other than that, that's what we have tonight. It was a good, a good night in terms of seeing that our elementary facility plan is continuing to move forward. As that plan progresses, we will come back and we will then begin to lay things out, base on our conversation with our staff. Actually, the educational programming within those facilities will come to light. That's not necessarily the greatest thing to look at right now, but as things begin to come up and with today's technology and that type of thing, you'll start to see the project really start to grow into, into a real positive. But that's all we have for you this evening.
I believe you, we had said at one of our last meetings that we would put out a monthly calendar. And I know we said we were going to stay indefinite on the, okay. And will we keep with the same dismissal times?
Yes.
For the definite future, okay. So the calendar first September will be posted to the website?
Yep.
Okay.
Mrs. Thompson has it done, I think. I shouldn't speak, but I think it's ready.
It is almost up.
It is almost up, yeah.
It will be done tonight.
Very good. All right, so I need a motion to adjourn at seven forty-two PM, please. And a second?
Second.
Okay, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
The opposed say no. We are done.